Good morning, everybody. I'd like to welcome you all to our regularly scheduled city council work session for Monday, November 17th. As a reminder, we do allow public participation, but we do not engage in public comment during our work sessions. And a reminder for everybody, please use your microphones if you're going to speak, because we want to make sure that it gets on the recording. And with that, we'll go ahead and we'll turn that over to Terry Wilcox for our new employee introductions.
Thank you. Good morning, council and staff. Today it is my pleasure to introduce a great group of new employees. We'll start with public works.
Good morning, city council. We've got a few of them today. So we'll start off with Maurice Archuleta. Stand up for us. Maurice is on our Streets Crew and is new to us, but I'll let him tell us a little about himself.
Morning. I'm Maurice Archuleta. I started on Streets about a month ago. I'm originally from Montevista. I was born in Durango. Graduated from Montevista, Colorado, right down south in the San Luis Valley. Been here about 23 years now. Love it. Plan on staying here the rest of my life, hopefully. I got four children. My mom, Rhonda. You guys all know my mom, Rhonda? Yeah. I should have been working here earlier, but I waited till now. But yeah, that's me.
This trip was a long time with us.
Perfect. Thank you. Chris Foti will stand up for us. So Chris was a seasonal for us for this whole last year, I believe, working with John Sullivan, a lot of our events and all things happening downtown. Chris has had some involvement or another, but I'll let him tell us about himself.
Hello. I am Chris, and I grew up in Colorado Springs, went to Western for about two years, and basically moved from there back to Colorado Springs and did a little stint in Dallas and recently or then after that lived in Pagosa Springs. And then I got imported here by my now wife about three years ago. And she works at URA Silversmiths as their general manager. And I love skiing, and I am excited to be working with this great group of people.
Welcome aboard.
Thanks, Chris. Dave Swakowski, he is our irrigation supervisor. It's actually a new position that we just created for the city of Montrose. And I mean, it's only been a couple of weeks and has been awesome. So the rest of the crew is learning a lot from Dave. I'll let him tell you about his experience, but he is an expert and really brings our parks division to the next level that we've been needing for a long time. So I'll let Dave tell us about himself.
Hello, everyone. My name is David Swakowski. I'm the irrigation supervisor. Basically, my experience, I went to college in Texas at Lee College in Baytown for process technology, basically pumps, pipes, refinery work. Moved out here to Montrose 10 years ago. Got a job at Rainmaker, was working my way up to the irrigation supervisor there. I'm certified to test backflow devices and irrigation technician. And so I'm looking forward to going through all the systems, making sure everything's working properly and making sure the backflows are doing their job. And I'm excited to be here.
Thanks, Dave. And I got one more. John Washbush. He is our park superintendent. Really, really proud to have John on board and really looking forward to what he brings to our team. As you all know, you've probably worked with John in some capacity in the past. And of course, our parks is very lucky to have him, but I plan on leaning on John in several ways, as many ways as I can, and really as an asset to the city. So with that, I'll hand it over to John.
Thank you, Jim. That's kind. Good morning, council members. I'm John Washbush. I've been in Montrose a bit over 20 years, 19 of those in public service at our county government, working as a planner, natural resources, government affairs director, deputy county manager, county manager, and a few other odds and ends in between. I've gotten to work with, I think, pretty much everybody at the table at this point, including Matt. Hi, Matt. It is an absolute pleasure for me to be part of the city team. I'm really excited about the role. I'm excited about the potential for parks. I think I'm supposed to be talking about myself, though. So two kids that are kind of the center of my world, along with my lovely wife, Megan, who I think many of you know. And we are determined to get them through high school here in Montrose as well. So just glad to continue to be part of the community, to be in service of the community, and to get to work with such good people. So I'm sure I'll see you all around, and I'll leave it at that.
Welcome.
Thank you. And I'll hand it over to Blaine. He's got at least one to introduce today.
Actually, council members and management team, I had two to introduce to you. Courtney Edinburgh, part-time animal shelter tech, couldn't be with us today, so she will, I think, attend on the next one. But it's my honor to present to you today a new police officer, Eric Gerstenberger. We hired Eric from the Grand Junction Police Department. He was working or assigned to the CMU campus for a few years. He has about six years as a police officer with Grand Junction Police Department. So with that, I'll turn it over to Eric.
Good morning, council. I'm Eric Gerstenberger. I am originally from South Carolina, though I have lived in Colorado about 20 years now in Grand Junction. I am right at about seven years of law enforcement with the city there. And I did the last about three years assigned, special assignment to the Colorado Mesa University. The majority of my career has been focused more on people in crisis, so I have a certificate for crisis negotiation. We are crisis intervention certified. I also have a Part 107 drone license, so I think I've got a lot of skills and tools that'll make me an asset to the community to better serve you and everyone else.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
I'll introduce you to Adrian in our engineering department. He's our engineering tech slash public improvements inspector. So he's the guy who's out doing a lot of the inspections on subdivisions, new development work going in. He's filling a vacancy we had when Russ left. The job description is essentially 100% him. We're really excited. We got exactly what we were looking for, which is rare. Usually get a little bit, not all of it. So we're very excited to have him. He brings a lot of great background to exactly what we need in that position. I'll let you tell him a little bit about himself.
Good morning. My name is Adrian Guerra. I'm local. I was born here in Montrose, raised in Olathe, graduated there, attended CMU, dropped out, proceeded to go towards my design field, I guess, going to Delta Montrose Technical College. I proceeded to get a job through the Delta Conservation District that works in hand with Natural Resources Conservation Services. It's a lot. I got hired by them last year, got let go. Now I'm working here, and I'm pretty excited.
Welcome.
Yeah, and the utilities departments, I'm excited to have Sam Michael. Sam comes to us from the ranch. She's a local person here, and I'll let her tell you a little bit more about her experience.
Hello, I'm Sam Michael. I was actually born and raised in Southern California, where I, during my summers, I spent all my dad's construction sites, from learning from the ground up, from managing workers to digging holes and running equipment. From California, we moved to Prescott, Arizona, where my dad wanted to pursue ranching. Didn't have enough land out there, so he found Montrose, Colorado, and we all moved out here. He's got a good sizable ranching operation and farming. Spent all last summer, this past summer, farming hayfields and learned a lot there with irrigation and all that. And I'm happy to be here now, you know, have a steady job and learn something new and have a career. I have a three-year-old daughter and a one-year-old son and a whole bunch of dogs. And yeah, thank you.
Anybody have any questions for our new employees?
You did pretty good picking these guys out.
We have a good team, departments.
We always do have good teams. Yeah, and now you all got to go back and go do something important.
Thank you. And welcome.
All right. Moving on to discussion items. Item A, Colorado Flights Alliance update. Matt Skinner is going to walk us through the whole process.
I will try to be efficient. Good so again, thanks for having me back up. Glad to give an update, a little bit of the state of the nation. I will. No, I'm live. There we go. Thanks. Yeah, sorry, guys. No, thanks for having me again. Good to see you all and happy to provide an update. We'll do a little, we'll kind of work our way from the top to the bottom with a little bit of national, where we've been, just a little of who we are, where we've been, and then what the current state of the nation is, and a little bit of forward-looking. This deck did get fairly beefy, so I'm going to try to be fastish, and you can stop me where we need to. This is the first question I've been getting for the last two weeks, was how the shutdown affected us, and it was minimal. We, I don't, and I was looking back too, I don't think we lost a single flight. We certainly had some delays. Denver had really, considering the scope of their operation, really, this is their stats over there on the right, they had some outbound delays, but really the cancellations were kept under 10%. And at the end of the day, it was handled very well. And actually, I was not to overly credit any one sector, but I, it became a little bit of a kick in the butt, I hope, for that conversation in DC when the aviation starts getting shut down. You used to both see the public sector and the private sector and the business sector start to rise up a little bit. Just glad that that's all behind us. So anyway, smooth enough for us at the end of the day. I think, as I was thinking, I only had 15 minutes. I actually cut out some national trends just before, I'll just kind of verbalize. It's been a pretty crazy year, a lot of ups and downs, both politically, economically, we've seen. And so with that, though, we've weathered it fairly well. We've had a pretty flat year, a pretty even year, which we take as a win. And we've seen the bookings move up and down with all of, you know, the variations in those politics and economic swings. And so with that, we've been pretty happy moving through to the end of this year. We're going to get into the numbers in a minute. Just backing up, I haven't been in front of you guys in a hot minute. And so, you know, once again, we're a freestanding nonprofit organization, a 501(c)(6), the Colorado Flights Alliance. Our mission is economic vitality for the western slope. We do that through air service development. We do it through marketing, guest services, partnership with local, public, and private organizations. And our main mission is to optimize that service and use our funds to the best of our ability in the most responsible way, listening to the requests, demands, developments of each of our community partners, and maximizing all of those sectors with, you know, the air service as the lever for the region. You know, at the end of the day, it is a regional interconnected project and a regional economy that we work towards, as we have discussed before. Our funding is about five to five and a half million a year right now. We're forecasting down a little bit for the coming year. About 75% of that goes to guarantees, 15% to domestic, sorry, regional, international, marketing, sales, public relations, and about 10% to our administrative costs. We provide a healthy ROI, and as always, we thank the city of Montrose for your support. We know you guys write us a check straight out of your general fund. It's super important, both in supporting our operation, but also in the conversation with all the partners. So we appreciate that. We're very well aware of where the rubber hits the road with that, and so we track our air service directly against local tax revenues and all of their variations. And while we know in Montrose that there are many more parts to this equation, we are always very pleased to see when the air traffic and the local taxes track almost identically as in these trends. Over the last 10 years, we've seen, you know, 190-plus percent growth and about 70% growth over the last five years. And you all in the city and the county, and the city has, you know, doubled in about 10 years and about 56% on the five years in the taxes. And so, you know, to the point of it's a broader economy, we just, we hope through these numbers that we are doing our part and moving that needle where we can. We are in the process of updating the economic study that we actually had done in conjunction to start about, gosh, seven, eight years ago now. And it just got the ball rolling on the update to that. And so we'll be back around as we need data, but we've gotten the first wave just from all of the information that was available. Right now, it's about 230, and this is just tourism. This isn't the corresponding business development or any of the other pieces of the puzzle that air supports, because those are very difficult to track. The tourism, we can actually track fairly directly. And so with that, we're able to make a reasonable estimate that we generate about 1,400 jobs with the flights and an economic output of about 235 million in Montrose every year. That is the county, but as you guys know, the city carries the bulk of the weight of the county revenues. And so we were pleased to see that that number's been growing. I think it was about 800 or 900 million when we did it in 2018 for the total output in tourism, and it's nearly at 1.5 billion at this point annually. The main, do I have that there? No. On the far right side, it just shows the share. And as we know the way that this work, a lot of the direct spending still goes up the hill to Telluride in the tourist seasons, but the indirect impacts are very heavy down here, the services, the employees, and all the things that are contracted through. And sorry, I literally just got this, and that's why it's in this grid, and I didn't have, like, I didn't make pretty charts. But really, a good third of the share of the economic impact from those flights out of the tourism sector are landing and staying in Montrose. With that, we, you know, obviously track our numbers over time. And annually, and we have been very solid over the last 10 years, as mentioned, these end in 2024. I get the 2025 results in about March, and so we'll update this. And part of the theme of today is that we've seen a little bit of a change in 2025, and we've tried to dig into where the specifics of that are, and we'll get into that in a few minutes. But over the years, we've been very happy to be able to add additional year-round flights, and we've grown each of the seasons commensurately as we've come through piece by piece, and then with a solid jump in capacity following COVID. With that, I'd like to throw this one in here for us all. And this, again, we'll look forward into 2025, but in the last 10 years, we've gone from half the size or less than half the size of Durango and Grand Junction in capacity and have now caught Durango and, sorry, we have now passed Durango and caught Grand Junction. I think in this coming year, you're sorry, Durango's going to claw back a little bit, and Junction got their Delta flights back. So we'll see a little bit of a swing there. But all in all, we're very pleased over the last 10 years, as again, another kind of gut check, that the system and the program and our approach is working, even though those are more business-driven airports, and that we have been able to make up, you know, some pretty significant ground and actually equalize the playing field on the western slope for air capacity. I'm going to be fairly quickish here. So we've grown in percent. You've seen these. We've also grown in seats. Over the last three years and just moving here now is where we've started to keep a little closer eye. So if we come out of COVID and we look at our growth against the comp set, and this is still annual, we're, you know, about 40%, we're right there within our comp group. And then in the last year or so, year over year, we've seen a little bit of acceleration in our comp set, where we are kind of averaging to the low end on that. If you look at the trends, and this is the annual trend again, you see a nice even growth for Montrose and Tex there in the second one. My mouse doesn't show up up there, does it? Is there like a pointer? I don't have those.
All right, we're good enough.
Okay. So like in the second column over, you can see that we've had nice even growth on an annual basis. Aspen's been kind of similar to us, Junction a little bit up and down, Durango was flat and then kind of kicked up later. Eagle's been fairly even and all of a sudden this year, well, they got the mainline jets to Denver that we got a year or two ago, and so it gave them a nice little kick. And then Hayden really kicked up when Southwest came in there. Gunnison's growing, but again, much smaller than we are. If we take a quick look at summer, just in these graphs, and sorry, the spaghetti is, the years are stacked on each other. So 2019 is that baseline there at the bottom, then year over three in the green, year over two in that kind of darkish blue, and then last year and this year in the orange. And so we're very pleased that this has continued to march along with a nice even pace. You know, last year we had, I think, like a year before this, Summer had like 26% growth. It was a big jump. So this summer, we ended up, actually, we gave back a few of the seats, but kept the passengers the same and absorbed some of that growth over the two years. So again, very pleased to see Summer marching along at an even step. When we get into the winter, though, and this is where we've been breaking out the trends, and as we've seen things start to waver just a little bit this year, we're trying to figure out where. And with that, in the summer marching along at an even pace, it's the winter where we're running about flat, or you can see there in the middle, you know, each of the last two years, we've kind of stepped down a little bit. And Steamboat, we've had some fluctuations with Southwest. We thought there was one too many flights out of Denver. They finally readjusted that and kind of modified it to one to three. So that's buried in there. We've also had some challenges actually out of Dallas coming out of COVID. So with that, and just looking at the trends that are up there, you can see our competitors, though, coming out of COVID have kind of having even growth year to year, even all the way up and down. If you're comparing the resorts on the left, they're all about three times our size, just as a note. And Sun Valley and Gunnison run about the same number of skier visits we do, and we have more than double the air. So we rely heavily on that air for the winter. And you can see there that we did pass Junction and, we have solidly more winter capacity for Junction and Durango. So when we dig into it, and if you look up in that graph on the upper right, and sorry, we go over into the seats then, that was the passengers, you can see that same up and down for Hayden, Steamboat there in the middle, and Montrose, Tex next to it, where we're up, we're down, and then back a little bit this year. Where the flag went up was in that three-year column up on the right-hand side, where coming out of COVID, just about everybody's in double-digit growth, some of them with some big numbers on smaller capacity, but we are down a little bit. And so with that, then, we started to try to figure out exactly where and how, and that's just a visualization actually of the same graph. I don't know if we need to repeat. So we've been down a little bit coming out of COVID and trying to figure out where the holes were hitting and how this was occurring. So we matched this up against the destination skier visits with the resort. And you can see on the left-hand side there, where our annual destination visits and air seats ran almost together constantly. After COVID, both came up a bit, and that's where we would expect then the skier visits to start, and not right away, it takes a year or two, but to start to match those destination seats again. And especially between '21, '22, and '22, '23, where you can see in the red that the air passengers came up, but the destination skier visits actually dropped off. And then they continue to drop off steeper than the passengers. And then you can see in the capacity up top, where we have been battling over the last couple of years. And this is where the flag really went up. About six weeks ago, I got calls from, well, I ended up in conversations with two of our airlines, where they were trying to back down our mainline jets on two of our current routes, including Dallas and Houston. And so we had to go to bat to fight those. And this had actually popped up almost a year and a half ago with Chicago, where they were ramping us down and telling us that we weren't keeping pace with our comp set. And this was the exact conversation that came up again in that fight, which, by the way, we kept all those mainline jets, just for reference, with them, was that they flat told us, like, hey, look at last March, you know, you're not keeping pace with your comp set. And so that's new for us. Like, we have not had that, those words directed in our, put in our direction in quite some time. And so with that, then, you know, we took a hard look at the visitation and why things could be dropping off, et cetera. And we, at this point, are carrying the load. We and the tourism board do all of the marketing in the destination. There is no help from the ski resort. They have eliminated international sales, domestic sales, they've eliminated their group product, hotel products, and really have ramped it all the way down to a small amount of group and a little bit of an effort at corporate group without much material action. And we saw this really hurt us last year, actually in early December and in January. And I'll show you the graph in just a sec to January. And we looked back, and they ended all of their marketing right as Bill Jensen left about five years ago. And we had said at the time, considering who we compete against, you know, Aspen's two CVBs alone have budgets that are four times the size of ourselves and the tourism board put together, and that doesn't even count their ski resort. And then you, you know, we run up against Vail, Jackson Hole, same thing. And so we're fighting some pretty big dogs out there. And so when this occurred, and we basically pointed out at that stage that this was going to start to affect us over time. It might not be right away, but we're going to start to see it run down. We've also had, well, I'll leave it at that just for a moment. So with that, we dug in just to make sure that, or to see where and how the leakage was occurring, and maybe I could reverse the order of these. In the middle there, at the beginning of the season, you can see we've held our own a little bit. The group week has dropped off, but in the middle there, where the blue line is this year, and the two yellow and red lines are the last couple of years, where we had been so proud to build the softer weeks of the season with group and international, as two specific programs at the resort has ramped down, we have bled the last two years out of that area specifically. And you can see the rest of the season is kind of holding its own. And so we can specifically see the results of that lack of help right now in the marketplace. The other problem that we're running into is post-COVID, there's almost like a renaissance in western and Rocky Mountain ski areas. People are investing hand over fist in capital and in their guest experience. And I mean, Steamboat spent 250 million. Deer Valley put 10 lifts in and doubled the size of their ski resort this year. Sun Valley, like, five lifts in four years. Park City built a gondola between that hill and Brighton. Big Sky put in a $50 million gondola, and we have put in two chairlifts in 18 years. And we have a, one of our key restaurants sitting in Tyvek wrapped at the top of Chair 9 right now that's been there for two years. And with that, then, we have also seen our ratings, and these are, you know, they're not science, it's directional stuff, but it's surveys. Conde Nast Traveler, we were ranked number one for multiple years in the teens. We are off the top 10 list at this point. Forbes, we were number two in 2019, off the list on that one as well. Ski Magazine, where we had been perennially in the top 10, we dropped five spots out to number 12 this year. And again, not scientific, but survey-based stuff, where we are hearing, and this is one of the funny things, we are hearing from the customer that we are not the shiny new thing right now, or that we are not ranking necessarily against all the progress, that these resorts who have fully hit the gas coming out of the pandemic. And this was the one that hit me, was somebody in kind of the younger ski bum generation was, Telluride's not the cool place to ski anymore. And that one struck me. Now, again, that's science, that's anecdotal street, you know, wisdom. But again, if that's the case, then we are, you know, we are bleeding market share out there. We are bleeding market position to our competitors. And it has hit the point where now with the data starting to back it up, that we are concerned. With that, you know, we were down 4% last winter. We had tough snow in the spring to acknowledge that, but we have been running off this winter again since the gate dropped. Coming right out of, or I should say, since the Labor Day gate, that's kind of the start of the kick-up. And then we've been running down 5% to 7%. That's with 3% to 4% added capacity. We've got LAX Five Days Weekly, which we're super psyched about for this winter. We've been fighting for that for a long time. We kept those Houston larger mainline jets, and then Southwest is going to throw in Nashville in the spring, just, and that's an experiment. It's not necessarily been one of our core historic markets, but they run it to Steamboat, and it does well. And they're trying, they're fighting with United and American, right? It's a territorial battle. So they're going to fly that for four Saturdays, which is always exciting, and we'll see how it does. When we had Charlotte all those years ago out of the Southwest, it actually did really well, and from Charlotte itself, like the guests proper. So on the overall, we're doing, you know, we're okay. You know, we're off a few percentage points. Our annual growth is stepping up, but we see the winter, I don't know how to put the technical term, we see the winter boat leaking a little bit, and it's concerning at this point. The good news is, is that summer's momentum is continuing. We'll see Chicago back to five times weekly this coming summer. That's one of the things that we had been fighting over, not, winter's been a little bit tough. But Houston, it will extend the season as well, go from Memorial Day all the way through middle of September. And then United's going to add LA service on Saturdays. So we're pretty excited about those additions for summer. And on the overall, then, you know, keeping us healthy and balanced, our summer service is actually about 70% of our winter, which is really high for mountain destinations. And with that, you know, we will keep that there and encourage our partners in the destination up there to assist where we can in redeveloping and trying to regain that winter piece as well. I think that's where I have it. You know, for you all, we just hope that we continue to deliver with that, you know, continue those, that economic lever that we're able to pull, and always glad to hear where your priorities are and where you see growth. And I always love when I get calls from prospective businesses up here and asking about what type of service they need and what the scope of the program is. So always available for any and all of that stuff.
I know you and I have had some discussions in the past on the topic, but it's pretty clear when you look at the anecdotal data that you suggest, coupled with the failure of the ski area to do any significant infrastructure improvements in a very long time, the two are pretty obviously correlated with each other. And just look at the other resorts and what's happening, as you point out, Park City and others, Deer Valley. And obviously, over the long term, that impacts the city of Montrose as it does the entire region. What do you think as a city we can do with respect to the TSG ownership to try and help, What do you think as a city we can do with respect to the TSG ownership to try and help, as a small player, help impress upon them the need to do some of the things that need to be done so these numbers don't plummet, so these numbers grow? Is there anything we can do?
Yeah, I certainly think so. I know that Chuck and Chad and their respective roles up here, and I know Chad's separate from the ski resort now, but, you know, the ski resort in general is invested in Montrose. You know, they're in and out of conversations with you guys on multiple levels at all times. I think reasserting to them the importance of their operation as an economic driver, and that it's not just, you know, in the town of Mountain Village, in the town of Telluride, that it is a regional effect, and to impress upon them the need for them to keep their operation at top level, to stay, to keep that brand intact, to keep that operation intact, and to maintain, sorry, I lost, I had a thread of thought from the teens, but to continue to maintain that resort in, you know, in the style or the level that it has been historically.
One question I might have is getting away from the Telluride connection, but to the other ski resorts in the area, Crested Butte, Mountain Crested Butte, what percentage of our travelers are based in destination for that style of adventure?
So Crested Butte, as we can tell, and this is a mix of their guests and locals, had been around 3% to 5% before Southwest, and I think is now around 5% to 7% or 5% to 8% since Southwest. So it's not materially displacing anybody coming here, and I actually welcome an 8% baseline that we can borrow out of their valley to put on our planes at this point. And, you know, historically, you know, we've had varying levels of partnership over there. It's been a little while yet, but, you know, at certain points, we've welcomed them actually marketing our flights in certain resorts, or certain destinations like LA, where they would put up, you know, info, and if they want to help that way, then we're game for that.
Very good. Any other questions for Matt? We appreciate your time. Thank you for giving us the brief update. And just, not anecdotally, American canceled our flight from Dallas, so we had two flights, they canceled the morning one, so we ended up having to sit around in the Dallas airport yesterday for six hours.
Yesterday, see, I wasn't looking, I was looking last week, I should have paid attention. I misspoke then. We did take one hit, so I'm sorry you guys had to take the delay.
On the positive side, last week, we had no problem.
Yeah, exactly. Well, it was really acute, apparently we were okay, but then yesterday. I wonder if they pre-canceled for weather, which always doesn't thrill me.
This is American, one of the American shutdowns.
It had nothing to do with the personalities.
No.
Appreciate that feedback.
They didn't know I was on the plane, otherwise.
It's gotten so bad there for a while when I was flying American between here and Atlanta through Dallas, I just went ahead and made a motel reservation in Dallas one night because invariably one of those flights was either late or got delayed.
All right, well, thank you, appreciate it.
I want to make a comment. I think it's important to note that CFA's doing really well. CFA's right where we want it to be. What isn't doing well is the ski resort. And if the ski resort doesn't do well, it's going to affect Montrose directly as well as CFA. So maybe we're going to need to look into what we can do to help Matt and other people encourage the ski resort to do better.
Appreciate that.
There's only so much input we can have and influence we can exert, but we can certainly make those conversations rise to the front.
Appreciate that, and, you know, it does a material effect on bottom line, a material effect on our performance, right, and how we're able to invest in future flights, and then how that translates back again through to economic push and development. So thank you all for that, I very much appreciate it. Thanks for having me, always good to see you all, good to see you as always, and you can always reach out directly, as you guys know, when you need anything individually.
Sounds great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What was the Eastern flight from Atlanta?
The summer of Atlanta, or the?
The one, the Eastern direct flight that comes in here in one of those?
Yeah, it starts on December 18th. And, sorry, I was already leading ahead to, like, I really want Atlanta in the summer too. We've been working on that for a couple of years, and we, coming out of COVID, we were in a pretty good spot, or going into, and so we've been kind of battling since then for resources. But yeah, that runs the 18th through the end of March. Thanks, you guys.
All right.
Thanks, Matt.
Moving on to our next item, we're going to go to item number B, the intergovernmental agreement with the Montrose Rec District, and this will be City Manager Bill Bell.
Yes, Ann came in this morning, but she is feeling under the weather, so she asked to go home, and I'm filling in for her. So this item is our annual intergovernmental agreement with the Montrose Recreation District. As a reminder to everyone, during the recession, we came up with the idea of having these intergovernmental agreements, or shared service agreements, with our local nonprofits and other taxing entities to save the collective taxpayer money. If we can work collaboratively to save money for the overall taxpayer here in Montrose, then we thought it was a good thing. Over time, these agreements have morphed a little bit as each of the different entities has grown and their capabilities of maintaining their own things and growing their own IT and stuff. We've changed to a lesser number of these agreements because some of the entities like City of Delta was able to grow and be able to handle all of their own IT stuff, and some of the other nonprofits have outgrown us. So that's a good thing. This one, as you can see in the packet, it has the redline version of the agreement. It has already been approved by the Rec District staff, but we always bring it, or try to bring it to City Council before it goes to the Board of Directors at the Rec District. So it'll go there after today. And you can see the changes in there. The biggest changes this time had to do with the ADA accessibility, making sure that the format fits that. We changed, as we always do, the fee schedule to make sure it matches the new salaries and weighted salaries, including benefits for all the positions. When we provide services, we charge those at cost. And then it includes some of the changes related to the, we did the cybersecurity training. We had a cyber incident that we all know about from last year, and so we're making sure that the staff over at the Rec District and at the Rec Center have all the same level of training that our city employees have. And so Greg and his team and some software systems we use will be training them to make sure they're at that high level as well. And then we updated the, we talked about the Baltridge Park Master Plan, and so in here, that relationship with the Public Works Department and the Parks Division specifically, that's always included in our agreement. And so we talk about shared use of the fields and those kinds of things. And so that's something important for the community to know. As a reminder, we don't own all of the rec fields that the users use. Some of those are owned by the Rec District. The city owns other rec fields, and we collaborate a lot, and there's a lot of crossover with those. And so next year in particular, I think we're going to be working diligently to really fine-tune those relationships. We have new staff members on both sides, and so want to make sure that we're all on the same page with how we're using River Bottom, Cerise, and Sunset Mesa Sports Complex. Any questions?
The two things that I noted, that, one is that the AI analytics, getting rid of that because it's really not a productive program. I think eliminating that and the cost associated with that makes excellent sense to me.
Oh, yeah, I didn't mention that one. Placer AI, we tried it for a couple of years. It was one of the new things where you can map the heat zones and see how many people are using all the different parks amenities, but there's a cost to that. And both sides, the Rec District and the city partnered on that, analyzed the cost-benefit analysis, and we're getting rid of that. It just, it isn't worth what we're getting.
Yeah, we want to make sure we're getting good value for our dollars, so that's good to see us being diligent on that. Any other questions for Bill on the IGA? All right, moving on to our next item, the CDBG Grant Modification Request for Haven House. As a reminder for the public, that the CDBG means Community Development Block Grant, and we do have these modifications to our grants. The city of Montrose is merely a pass-through governmental entity involved in those, that we do not financially have any kind of financial burden on the citizens because of these grants. And with that, we'll turn that over to, I guess, you and Shaney together, or?
Yeah, I can fill in for, again, this is one where I'm filling in for Ann, who was filling in for Jace, and so. I'm third stringer.
Who's filling in for Tim, who is filling in for John.
Right. So let me, I'm trying to get to it, but there's a lot of pages prior to it. So as a big picture, we've partnered with nonprofits in the community for years with CDBG block grants, and that's federal money that goes to the state of Colorado and then disseminated, as the mayor mentioned, to help do things in your communities. And it has a variety of purposes, but we've used it for the local Boys and Girls Club expansion. We've used it to help Center for Mental Health before it was access to create their pharmacy over by the drive-in movie theater. We've partnered with Sharing Ministries to build their brand-new food bank years ago. So we've really done a good job in our community, and DOLA talks about it statewide, is leveraging CDBG dollars to benefit the overall community. You have to have a local government sign off on the use of CDBG and serve as the administrator because they are federal funds, and that's why it's coming before you to make this amendment to the agreement. We don't, as staff, don't have the ability to do that, and so a letter needs to come from the City Council. I believe this is also on the agenda tomorrow night because it's timeliness due to the grant cycle. And we usually wait two weeks, but because it's a grant, a lot of times we'll do it back-to-back. So I'll be presenting again tomorrow night on it. So all we're doing is modifying a little bit. It's all described in the memo. It's for Haven House. We've supported Haven House over the years in a variety of ways, even dating back, it feels like 10 years ago, we paid their rent to the county when the county owned their facility, and we helped with their utilities and those kinds of things. So we've really been a good partner to Haven House. Haven House fills a huge need for our community with the type of unhoused population that they serve, and this is just another way we can help them. You can read about it in the packet or in the memo, but the modification partly is due to modular construction versus the other type that it was going to use. So that's described in here, and they're changing a couple other things that needs to be approved by the granting authority. They can't just go and do that, change some substantive things to their project.
One of the things I'd point out is that, because of Region 10, Region 10 deals with a lot of the development block grants as well. Anytime you change the format of the structure of the grant, the wording of the grant is very particular, and if you change the spending pattern or the spending allocations, they don't necessarily disapprove, but they want to know what's going on. They want to have their finger on the pulse of where the money is being spent, which is good accountability on the part of our DOLA representatives. And it's a good financial accountability for us as well to make sure that people know that we are keeping an eye on where our money is being spent. And this is one of those that's not unusual at all. It's just one of those, making sure that DOLA knows what's going on. So pretty much standard procedure.
I did have one question, where they're cutting back in the size due to the allocation? Or does anybody know if they're making plans to, when they do that cut back, to where they can maybe extend it in later years? Or are they going to have to start all over?
I don't know. You mean, are they going to build it in such a way that they could easily add on?
Yes.
For growth of the facility? I don't know the answer to that. We can find out and shoot out an email.
Because it just seems like, you know, that there's continuing to be some growth there over a period of time, that there ought to be within that design ability to extend it without having to do major reworks of things.
I don't know the answer to that, just from reading through the packet and just knowing about the project, modular construction lends itself to that.
Right.
I think it might be easier than if they were doing it the other way. But it looks like just it was primarily due to inflationary costs going up, cost of construction going up, so changing the type of construction and shrinking down the project scope a little bit to get less square footage for the, I didn't mention, it's the Early Childhood Center that they're adding on, and then some additional housing options. But I think, just from experience at the city, modular construction lends itself a little easier to expansion in the future. But I can ask about that and have an email sent to council as an update.
All right.
Bill, I don't mean this to come across rude because I'm supportive. Why is the city of Montrose supporting this grant for something that's happening in the town of Olathe?
It's a good question. We have always supported Haven House. This one is not monetary, so there's no cost to us on this one, we're just administering it for them. But the services that Haven House provides primarily serves residents of Montrose because we're the largest demographic. There's some Delta connection as well, but for the most part, Montrose benefits. If Haven House were to go away, the residents of Haven House would find themselves in the city of Montrose, most likely. And so we want to keep their efforts going, want to help them grow in their service delivery, and we have a good kind of nexus to what they're doing. And it's just like the same reasons we help All Points Transit and we help some of the other nonprofits. If they were to go away, most likely the city of Montrose would be asked by the residents to pick up those services at a greater cost than what our contribution is currently to those outlying service agencies. So I think that's how I would answer it if the public were to ask. There's a lot of synergy between the two. Haven House also serves a different demographic. We've all talked about the unhoused roundtable and the unhoused population in Montrose, and what we provide at the Old Brown Center near the animal shelter in the wintertime is emergency sheltering. That's for a different population of the unhoused than is served by Haven House. Haven House has families, has vulnerable populations. What we saw behind the Methodist Church, who goes to Shepherd's Hand quite a bit, and who we work with at the Old Brown Center, is a different type of population that isn't really compatible very well with the service population of Haven House. So we kind of need both.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I see Chief Hall nodding rigorously over there in agreement.
Oh, I was just.
Yeah, oh, yeah. Yep, hitting all the points.
Exactly.
All right, anything else on that? All right, moving on, mail-in ballot election plan for 2026 municipal election. And this is going to be City Clerk Lisa Del Piccolo and Senior Deputy City Clerk Brusetta Ortega.
Thank you, Mayor Frank, and City Council. Brusetta and I are here today to bring forward our election plan for the 2026 municipal election. Election Day will be Tuesday, April 7, 2026, and we will have three City Council seats on the ballot. We'll have District One and District Two, which are both four-year seats, and the at-large seat, which is a two-year seat. Even though April 7 seems far away, our election process actually starts next month. We'd like to bring forth a resolution on the December 2 city council meeting agenda, authorizing a mail ballot election. And then immediately following adoption of that resolution, we'll have candidate information available on the city website and in the city clerk's office at City Hall. Beginning December 6, candidates can circulate nomination petitions. They need to collect signatures from 25 registered voters living anywhere in the, within the city limits. And then the candidate petitions must be delivered to the city clerk's office no later than 6:00 PM on January 26. February 3, we're planning a candidate information session, and at that point, names will be drawn for ballot position. Once we have that ballot order, we will certify our ballot language to the Montrose County Clerk and start moving forward with ballot production from there. Ballots will be mailed December, I'm sorry, March 16 through 23, and they can be either mailed back to City Hall, or they can be delivered to one of our three dropbox locations. We'll have a dropbox in the lobby of City Hall. We will have a dropbox in the lobby of the Montrose County Elections Office, and the county has very graciously let us use their exterior dropbox on South Second Street. That's where most voters, I think, deliver their ballots, and they're just used to that location. We will contract with the Montrose County Elections Office for the use of their ballot locations, ballot dropbox locations. They also let us use their vendor to produce our mail ballot packets so that we can use them with their scanning and tabulating machines. They're very easy to work with, and we are very grateful for their assistance. On Election Day, April 7, City Hall will be open 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, and then unofficial results will be announced on the website as soon as we have those final numbers tabulated. We also contact the candidates by text message before we make those results public. Then we'll conduct a canvas of the votes by the deadline of April 17, and at that point, our results become official. The newly elected city councilors will take the oath of office at the city council meeting scheduled for April 21. Brusetta and I have different roles in this election process. My role is to make sure we follow our election plan and to make sure we're meeting all statutory, municipal code, and city charter requirements. And Brusetta will be training our election judges, and she will be supervising the election room. She'll keep daily records of the ballots received, make sure that our numbers are always in balance with our poll book and with ballots we have taken over and scanned at Montrose County. Brusetta has also taken on the task of marketing our election, so she has met with our creative team at the city, and they are coming up with a plan to make sure citizens know that now is the time to start thinking about being a candidate and how you become a candidate. Then we'll also have a push in the spring for getting people to vote. people to vote. Hopefully, we'll have a higher voter turnout than our last election, which was a kind of bleak 25%. So, we're hoping for great voter turnout and, and a good, a good, how do you say, ballot for our citizens to choose on the ballot who to vote for.
So, was that the November election or the last city election?
That was the last municipal election. We don't have the numbers really for the November ballot yet. And then, in the, in the meeting packet are the complete election plan, which includes an election calendar, and we have the resolution we'd like to put on the December 2nd city council meeting in the council meeting packet. And Brusetta and I are happy to answer any questions you might have on all this information.
This is pretty much standard. We do this every election. This isn't anything out of the ordinary.
Exactly. There are no significant changes from 2024. There are all dates and times have been changed, and that's about it.
Any questions?
Are we anticipating?
To answer my question by how they were going to optimize the election.
And also as a reminder that the Colorado Municipal League has a candidate information guide available that provides information on what it means to be a candidate and how to follow a lot of the critical steps on reporting and the financial accountability and a lot of those things. So, it's also available, and it's a great resource.
Exactly.
And if there are no other questions or comments for that.
Are we anticipating putting any, anything else on this ballot? At this point, I have heard of no other questions on the ballot.
What was your question?
Are we going to put anything else on this ballot?
Not at this time. We haven't really discussed anything else, so.
And there are no, nobody is circulating initiative petitions that I'm aware of.
All right. And again, the, the first day you can actually start circulating petitions is January 6th.
That is correct. And those petitions must be picked up from the city clerk's office.
And as a reminder that although the candidates are drawn from the districts, that you do not represent specifically that district. You represent all of the citizens of Montrose. The districting is just a method to make sure that we're pulling from the different sectors of the city for representation.
And all of the citizens vote?
And all the citizens vote on all the candidates. All right. Moving on to our next item, the fun stuff. More numbers. Yay.
Good morning. So, this morning, I have Jim Hinkle. He's our CPA auditor for the city's financial statements, and he's going to go through the 2024 audit with you.
Good morning. My name is Jim Hinkle with, yeah, try not to yell. My name is Jim Hinkle with Hinkle &amp; Company CPAs, and we did the annual audit of the financial statements for the year ended December 31, 2024. And thank you all very much for allowing me an opportunity to come in and take a few minutes and talk about the audit process. I know the financial statements are rather old at this point, but I typically just focus more on the audit process of what we do in a financial statement audit. But if you have questions about the financial statements, we can certainly talk about those as well. We started off our audit by updating our understanding of the city's internal accounting controls. We look at the different cycles separately, the cash disbursement cycle, the cash receipt cycle, and the payroll cycle. We are primarily looking for what we call a segregation of duties. A transaction typically takes three steps, the initiation, the approval, and the recording of that transaction. And we do not want one person to do all three of those steps. That's called the segregation duties. We also then look at what we call control features of the internal control process, and that is things like approval of invoices prior to payment, approval of account coding before it's posted to the general ledger. And then, throughout our audit and any testing that we do, we determine whether those control features are operating as intended and whether they can be relied upon. We do this for a couple of reasons. First of all, we are looking for what we call significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in the internal control structure. A significant deficiency is defined as a design flaw in the system of internal controls that would allow an error to go undetected in the ordinary course of business. And a material weakness would be a significant deficiency that might result in a material misstatement to the financial statements. And based upon our analysis, as well as all of our testing, we did not find any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in the internal control structure. That's the answer that you're looking to hear. We then turn our attention to the audit of the financial statements. We use that internal control analysis to assess our audit tests and the risks of a misstatement of the financial statement. We primarily use what we call substantive procedures, which is test of details, where we drill down into account balances, and we look at the underlying transactions, and we verify those with supporting documents such as invoices, cash receipts, contracts, agreements, et cetera. And we're trying to determine whether those transactions are, in fact, recorded in accordance with general accepted accounting principles. We also use a lot of analytic review, where we compare the current year's revenues and expenses to the prior year, current year-to-budget numbers, relationships between the balance sheets and the income statements. And we're looking for relationships that we either can't explain or we didn't expect, and if we have any of those, we do more tests of details. The end result of that is your audit opinion, and yours is technically referred to as an unmodified opinion, which in layman's terms is a clean opinion, states that the financial statements are prepared in accordance with general accepted accounting principles and applied on a consistent basis with the previous year. That's also the answer that you're looking for. We issued a required communication letter along with our audit. We are required by our standards to communicate in writing if certain events occur in the course of the audit, and we had nothing negative to say in that letter. We did not have any disagreements with management. We did not have any difficulties in the course of the audit. We did make some audit journal entries at the, during the process that we've attached to that audit. But all in all, it, it went smooth. Before I get into a little bit more of some detail, I would like to say that one of the most important things that I like to communicate to the governing body is that we, as auditors, felt like we had open transparency. Everything that we asked for was provided in a timely fashion. Nothing was kept from us, and we felt like we could ask for and receive whatever information or documents we felt necessary to perform an independent external audit. So, I think that's important for you all to hear. This is our second year on the audit of the city. We believe we are making very good progress in the financial reporting process. The year before we took over, the audit was late. The first year, as we learned a lot of the processes and worked through a lot of details from the prior firm, it was late. This last year, we had the audit issued in the month of September, which would have been within the timeframe of the extended time by the state. And I feel confident that we're moving toward being able to have the audit complete and issued probably late June or early July before the July 31st due date of the, of the state, state auditor's office. So, we are moving in the right, right direction. We are making good progress. One of the biggest items that has helped or contributed to the lateness is the accounting for capital assets and the depreciation detail and schedules. We worked with management in doing some things such as setting up a separate general ledger fund within the general ledger accounting to maintain the capital asset records and be able to reconcile those records throughout the year as opposed to after year in and kept off the general ledger like some municipalities do. I think that's going to help clean things up and help be able to move management to be able to have this financial reporting done much more timely and much more smoothly as we come through the spring semester. So, we are making great progress. We are moving in the right direction, and I think that things have gone, gone well. Any questions on the audit process? Much fun.
I'm just sorry we put you right between the two bosses.
Well, technically, I work for the council. I work with management, but the council technically is the ones that hire and fire the external auditors. That way, we do have independence with management to be able to sit here and, and say whatever we felt necessary to say without repercussions of, from management. So, but I appreciate that very much. Is there any questions on the audits or the financial statements themselves? Since I'm here and I, if you have a few minutes, do you all understand the difference in the financial statements that are in this package that you have in front of you? Some council members are, some council members aren't, and I'd be more than happy to go through that briefly if you have some questions.
You realize we just got this this morning, so we haven't looked through it.
That's fine. And you're welcome to ask me questions going forward. You do have three sets of financial statements in this package. The first one is called a government-wide financial statement, and that is total of the government funds and the business-type activities. That is on a, what we call a full accrual basis, which is just like any other business, General Electric, Apple, Microsoft. We recognize revenues when earned, expenses when incurred. We have long-term assets and long-term liabilities. The second set is what's, what has at the top of the title, Government Funds, and that's where the individual government funds are listed separately in columns. That is unique to governments, and that is what we call a modified accrual basis, or in the government industry, we refer to that as a sources and uses funds statements. In other words, we do not record long-term assets or long-term liabilities on that financial statements. Capital asset additions are considered capital outlays or expenditures, a use of funds. Payments, principal payments on debt is considered a use of funds and therefore an expense. And if we went out and got new debt, that would be considered a source of funds, and it would be reflected as a revenue or an inflow. So, that governmental funds, where we have those individual funds broken out separately, that is more of what did we receive during the year or immediately thereafter, within 60 to 90 days, and how did we spend those resources during the year or immediately after the year. And then, there is a page in there that reconciles that with the full accrual basis. The business-type activities, the water, utilities, sewer, things like that, that's also on a full accrual, just like any business is. And the difference between a government fund and a business-type fund is a business-type fund receives a majority of its revenues from fee-for-services, where government funds receives a majority of their revenues from taxing-type sources, which is not an exchange where we get something and receive something in return. So, that's why we have so many different financial statements in a government. And if you have any questions at all, I'd be more than happy to answer those, especially to understand how those statements flow and work and, and being able to interpret those. The more you all know, the better you're able to facilitate your fiduciary responsibility with, with the town, or with the city as well. So, I welcome any kind of questions that you all may have in understanding how those financial statements present themselves and kind of how, what they mean.
I think giving us a time to go through it and actually read through it, we're, like Judy Ann said, we're a little premature to ask any questions because we haven't had the chance to evaluate the data.
Sure.
But we will certainly reach out to you with any questions we have, and we'll make sure that we have intelligent questions.
Very good. There is no dumb question.
To me, the, the overarching thing about this entire presentation is that it's a clean audit.
Yes, that the city does have adequate internal accounting controls to ensure that day-to-day transactions are being processed appropriately and correctly, that cash is handled, and when I say cash, dispersments, payables, expenditures, as well as deposits, are handled appropriately and have the segregation of duties, and that the reporting process is moving in the right direction. So, yes, I would agree with that.
Very good. Any other questions?
Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Oh, my pleasure. Thank you very much.
Very clear explanation.
And thank you to management. We ask for a lot of information, a lot of questions, and we are in addition to their daily jobs. So, I appreciate the responsiveness of everyone in the accounting department, that they were very responsive in, in everything that we asked for.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And with that, we'll move on to our final item as soon as Shani's visiting is done.
I'd like to also say thank you to Shani.
Oh, yes.
You've done an excellent job working with the auditor, so thank you for doing all of that.
You are very welcome.
All right. Now, our final item is the 2025 supplemental budget ordinance. Again, this is something we do every year. This is not unusual. It is not abnormal. And with that?
That is very correct, Mayor Frank. So, Ordinance 2698, it's actually in this packet, and it will be on the agenda tomorrow night for first reading because we only have one city council meeting in December. So, you're going to get hit with a lot of budget stuff tomorrow night. The 2025 supplemental budget is a time to basically ratify the decisions we made during 2025 that were not part of the original budget. So, 2025's supplemental budget ordinance is a little bit longer than we've seen in the past. We've had a lot of different things going on in the city, and for one, a new public works facility, which we issued bonds for. So, we need to add that to our 2025 budget. On the very last page of your packet is a summary of what we, which funds we are going to supplement and a little explanation as to why we're supplementing them. And I could go through those with you real quick, if you don't mind. So, the general fund, basically, we are supplementing for real property purchases, some economic incentives, public defenders for municipal court. That's something that changed in the state of Colorado law several years ago, and we're really seeing that hit in 2025. Vehicles that were ordered in previous years but weren't received, so those are coming out of 2025 versus '22, '23, or '24. And then, the year-two funding for the CMU endowment. The 2026 budget actually has that third payment included in the original budget, so we shouldn't see that next year. The Public Safety Fund is late in 2024. We contracted with Axon for FUSIS cameras, and it's a bundle, so it included a lot of different things, and I am not an expert on that, but just wanted to get that in front of you to make sure everybody knew what we were doing. The URA, that 22,500 is actually treasurer fees for collection of the TIF revenue from the Montrose Urban Renewal Authority. The Tourism Fund, as you were aware, fireworks came in about double what we had budgeted them for 2025, as well as some marketing. And then, we did a new software purchase. We actually, I think, got rid of some software and then implemented a more reasonable software that has more functionality than the old one did. Website, sorry. Yeah, it's website. The General Debt Service, that's to account for the new public works facility. We have a payment that's actually due December 1st, so we want to make sure that you all approve that. Cemetery Perpetual Care Fund, this is a transfer from that fund to the general fund, and it's mainly interest that's earned. The Special Improvements Fund, there again are treasurer's fees for the collection of Riverwood and Otter Pond Improvement Districts. The Capital Infrastructure Fund, there's that 22 million that we think we're spending for the public works facility. It's part of the bond issue that we issued earlier in the year. The Water Fund is actually, we're supplementing it for the project out there on 6600 Road. It's the Interconnect Project, and that portion of it is grant-funded by DOLA, so 730,000 will come back to the city for that. The Internal Service Funds, again, these are for vehicles we received that were pre-
The Internal Service Funds, again, these are for vehicles we received that were previously budgeted, but not budgeted in 2025. So, a couple of those big purchases were trash trucks. That's where you see that big $900,000 supplement. And then the Health and Dental Management Fund, this is due primarily to increase in premiums for more participants. The city actually is over 200 full-time employees now, and we've got a lot of people taking advantage of our health and dental plans and vision insurance. So, with that, I will answer any questions you all have or comments.
Questions or comments?
As always, thank you for a great job.
Lot of hard work. I think people don't understand how much work goes into creating all these, and balancing everything, that we have a well, a very well-structured accounting system, so.
And, and I should thank the department heads and supervisors because they are very, they're very instrumental in making sure that these numbers encompass what we needed to encompass. Just like with the regular budget, they're very instrumental in helping to get all that put together. And then throughout the year, they are instrumental in keeping things moving as far as their department purchases and things go so that we can have a clean audit at the end. So, that's really our ultimate goal, right? Plan, process, and then have that ultimate clean audit at the end, so.
Very good, great job.
We appreciate all your help as well, so thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Thanks, Shaney. All right, moving on to general city council discussion. Any items from council? Just wanted to point out, we have a busy, busy holiday season coming up with, on the 24th, I believe it, or the tree lighting next, not this Friday, but the Friday after, the 28th. The 28th, the tree lighting, and then there's a lot of great events coming up in Montrose for the holiday season. And just wish everybody a happy holidays. Thank you, we are adjourned. Well, staff comments, I guess, but they're, all, all the staff are right here, and you've all made your comments, so.
Well, we have heard from the chief.
All right, thanks, everybody.